We're gonna go with Spotlight. I'm going slowly so Raj can get his stuff ready.
Inco.
Thank you, Raj.
Spotlight on Excellence. Five of one, recess rocks. Rhode Island Special Control and Training.
Recession Rocks. Recession Rocks is a program sponsored by Playworks that is... was sponsored by Blue Cross. I don't know what the organization's story. It was Blue Cross. Blue Cross, it's a whole... I'm gonna lose the organization, so I don't see that going on. Blue Cross, Playworks, and Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. There we go, we got them. What they do is they sponsor training for schools. It's for teacher assistants, school staff, and the principal of schools. And they really work on developing a regio fun atmosphere of play for kids. So it's really getting kids to play appropriately at recess. Recession is often one of the very difficult times because it can be somewhat unstructured, when a lot of arguments happen or fights over how to play a game or things like that. One thing that Playworks does is they give the strategies to the people who are actually supervising the play of how to get kids' attention, how to set up play, how to set up various stations. So we went to two full days of training where we literally played for two days. We came up with a game plan. All of the teacher assistants in the building went. So it was Joshua Gay, Allison Morgan, Beth Turfatt, Marjorie Heinty, and Carla Woodhouse. Both PE teachers, so Noel Kieran and Jason Ford and myself. One of the things they require is that the principal participate because the principal is often the person who has the leverage to make things happen within the building as far as schedule and things like that and support in the program. So they're very vested into the principal being supportive of the program. So, since we've gone, actually after day one, the teacher assistants came back and started implementing Playworks games right away. What they really do is get you to teach kids to play certain games. You set it up in certain areas with known parameters. So we have set up a recess binder. This is, we had our first recess rocks meeting this afternoon. What they, their Playworks trainer will come out and work with us during a play, a recess section, and actually work with the team of individuals. So one of the things we did was come up with a logo for our recess rocks team, taking our Wilbur logo. So it will be "Wilbur says sore, stop and listen, open the door to making good decisions, act responsibly, and respect yourself and others de kind." So we're kind of going with our new mascot that we just named Wilbur. He was officially named Wilbur at the homecoming, where did you, it was pep rally that was, that we announced the name. So what we do is putting together a game plan. This binder will have a map of the playground areas mapped out with certain games are played, the staff in for the playground, and actually teaching the kids to play certain games. And so what Mr. Ford and Ms. Kieran will do is teach the games in the PE classes. When possible, the teacher assistants will push in so that they, that they're also a part of that teaching the kids to play, but then the rules transfer to the recess setting. The reason that's so important... Can that be loud enough?
No, you won't.
Okay. The reason that's so important is what we found was happening is, say, kids would play four square or they would play a football game and they would, every day they would make up a different set of rules, which would lead to people arguing or excluding each other. So it's not that we don't want them to play, we just want them to play in ways that everybody has a fighting shot of consistently knowing the rules, knowing what the expectations are. So what, there'll be known rules for given games, which are basically the rules of the game. So what we're working on is a strategic plan to teach the kids games and then you rotate. So certain things might be there all the time and other things rotate in and out. It has been going really well in the lower... A little bit of pushback from the fifth and sixth grade because they don't necessarily like the fact that we're telling them how to play a given game. It's not that we're telling them they can't play, it's just we're saying if you're gonna play four square, you're gonna play by the given rules. So it's been pretty successful so far and, and right this year, I think we're gonna front-load teaching some of the recess games in PE classes, but I think once the kids know more of the games, that won't be necessary. But it's been a lot of fun. Even just things like getting the, getting the kids to, teaching them little tricks to transition kids to their lines and having them do some deep breathing before they go in so that they're, you know, they're in a better state to walk through the hallways and not be so ramped up from recess. I mean, it went down to that whole mindfulness level also. So that's recess rocks in a nutshell.
If the kids wanna just play their own game?
They can, absolutely.
They can do that, they're not...
They can't play in, you know, in the middle of the given game, but they are welcome to go and play something else. It is not a requirement.
Jump over or sit.
So there's usually two or three kind of structured games and then they're more than welcome to play whatever they want. I mean, it is their recess, they can choose what they want. We are not telling them they have to play a given game.
There's still free play?
Yes.
If that's their option.
Absolutely.
And just to say, you were really, we were, the school was recognized for the fact that all of our recess people went to the training. No other school district has had that happen. So we have consistency about how this is being...
And this is really, really recent. It's been, the two sessions were in the month of October. So we're just getting down to the point where we're tweaking implementation. I will start sharing like probably a game a week in my parent memos on weekends just so that they can see the games and really getting the kids to realize why. We want them all to have fun and all know the rules and not have it be, you know, turn into something of a ruckus because, you know, different people are playing different ways. So...
It's also a really great way, I think, of empowering the assistants
I agree.
To feel a part of the team. And I think you guys are doing a great job.
Just elevating their practice.
Yep. And we, I met with all of them today and they're all very happy about, about the way recesses are going. Once again, I think the older grades are, we need to do a little bit more coaching and teaching there, but I think it's kind of changing habits that they've developed over time. The little kids are responding very well. And the, the set of games you would do would be different with fourth and fifth grade than what you would do with kindergarten first or second grade. So it's not that it's one set of games for everybody.
You mentioned your parent memo. Do you get any feedback from your parent memo, from parents?
I actually got a couple of people that responded to me last weekend and they were quite positive about liking getting the feedback and knowing that they can consistently go to one place. I kind of feel like you don't necessarily always get the positive feedback because people just don't necessarily think to, to give that, but it was like all of a sudden, I think I got three emails on Saturday morning and I was like, wow!
So it's effective.
It was nice.
It's effective.
Yeah. And I think they like the format for this year.
It's one-stop shopping.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you. Six, Super Tentacles Shared Services Agreement. Do I have a copy of that document?
The Shared Services Agreement?
Hmm.
It's right there up at...
Where is it?
Board docs, where everything lives now.
Do we have a, do we have a paper copy of that?
Yep.
You notice I'm the owner without a computer here?
It's hard to read.
I'm not giving in. Not giving in to all these people sitting behind their computers, I've been away. You don't have to, we don't have to wait for that, go ahead.
On October 22nd, I met with Robert Mushon and Tony Texer, the town council president and town administrator. And we discussed the shared services agreement. It's part of the MOU that we get together every year to regroup, talk about what's working, what isn't working. And so we had a really good conversation. Before I met with Mr. Texer and Mr. Mushon, I met with our head custodian, I met with our IT director, I reached out to Bill Moore, who is the town DPW director, and took notes and got their feedback, positive and negative. And if you look up, you can't really see, I can see it in front of me, we have the emendations in red. Can anyone see those? I wish it were larger, but...
Those are the additions?
Yes. And so...
Can we make that bigger?
No, I think we can. Yep. With the little arrow. There it is. Yeah, oh, yeah, perfect. Thank you, Jonathan, thank you, Mariah. We did make some changes. B, maintaining and cutting the grass around all town-owned property. This is the director of public works section of the MOU.
So can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Can you just give a quick oversight for anyone that doesn't know where this document came from and why it exists?
Sure.
I'll send you to the camera.
Many, many years ago, a verbal agreement was made between the town and the schools to share some services. It was never codified, there was never any documentation, and it was working. The school department shared its IT director with the town, notably the safety complex, the public safety complex, and the town shared their director of public works with the schools. Plowing, exterior work, major maintenance jobs. And so as the school building became more complex, you know, with more complicated systems for HVAC systems and so forth, and also as systems at the public safety complex, those technology systems in place, they became more complex, everyone felt, all the parties felt we needed to document this, to hammer out a memorandum of understanding. So we did that last year. It was maybe a two to three month process, working with the town and the schools. It was seamless. Everyone agrees that if we want to share efficiencies in a small town, between departments, that means we have to share resources, and it has been working well. We did get together as the agreement directs us to do, and we did make the following changes. The DPW was tasked with maintaining and cutting the grass around all town-owned property, and we added including weekly mowing, not weeding, of the Wilbur McMahon School Oasis and monthly weeding of the courtyard to nowhere. Yes, the courtyard to nowhere is an actual term, and it's, and it's in this agreement. It is the secondary courtyard. Okay? It is right here. And because of safety issues and lack of required egress and so forth, it can no longer be a functional space. So the weeding is done in there. And the oasis, the DPW was mowing the oasis, but there was never a schedule. So, you know, Sonya and I would sort of hound, you know, if we caught one of the DPW staff members, "Hey, can you get in there, it's really high, we have our oasis committee coming to do some weeding in there," which we did twice this summer, and, you know, the grass was too high. So we knew that we need to make, we needed to add a provision for more regular monitoring and mowing by the DPW of our beautiful lawn in the Echo Oasis. So we added that and everyone agreed, both sides, to put it there. We also, if you look at C, overseeing heat and AC maintenance. The DPW is, the director is tasked with overseeing our heating and cooling system here. It is a pretty sophisticated online dashboard. No one on site has ever had access to that dashboard. So you've been in meetings in here where you are freezing, right? Or when you are really hot.
Like today.
Like today. And so it was, you know, my idea to allow access for, to this dashboard board for our new IT director. We know it's a sophisticated system and Jonathan has the skill set to assist with that. Have you been in there yet?
I finally got access to it the other day, yeah. We started poking around a little bit. The dashboard that'll allow us to easily change individuals', locate our temperatures, will be ready soon, in the next few days.
This, no one on site has had, has had access since the renovation?
I had a New Year's Eve event here and it was like 40 because no one could turn to heat.
Uh, yes, I lived it last year and no one could do, you know, so we negotiated that into the shared services agreement. So now Jonathan will have access. I have to say, the town has been really committed to working with us so that all of this works for both sides. We also, if you look at L, we added manage exterior issues such as roof siding and other breaches. I mean, that's my language, I'm no engineer, so maybe we could wordsmith that a little bit, but we have issues to the exterior of our building that are beyond the skill set of our custodial staff. You know, they're not roofers, they're not masons, they're not, you know, waterproofers. And so we really need the DPW director to assist us more with managing those exterior issues. We're dealing with one right now after the most recent rain. That is the hallway across from Carolyn Cedric's office, you know, the eastern wall of the gym, when it rains, it comes in. It's awful. So that's a breach that we need our DPW director to help us work on, and that is happening, and that's been a breach for a long time. Also, there's waterproofing that needs to be done in this courtyard. When it rains, there's water alongside the hallway to the cafeteria, and that's going on for a bit, so we need some waterproofing done there. And so Mr. Texer, Mr. Mushon agree that the director of the DPW should assist us in hiring and getting all of that fixed. We also, if you look at I, go all the way down there. Perform such other duties agreed upon by Little Compton Town Administrator. That's just some wordsmithing. Mr. Texer's position is administrator, not manager, so we just sort of changed that. Also, I thought under section four, there was some vague language regarding, we had, if you look at the sentence that starts with furthermore. Furthermore, director of IT and the town hall information technology consultant. The town hall is separate from the services provided by our IT director. The town hall decided to go and outsource their technology needs, and so they work with a vendor. And in this agreement last year, we wanted a provision for both the town and the school that provided some sort of redundancy. So if Jonathan cannot be here for whatever reason, then we could call the town hall vendor. If the town hall vendor couldn't be there and Munis crashes, and we use that too, then Jonathan could be, you know, we could ship him there and he could fix whatever he needs to fix there in an emergency. So we've, we've just felt the language is a little bit vague when I met with Jonathan about this agreement and asked for his input. I pointed this out, and, and it looked like we were asking for a physical backup system, you know, backups that we have in our houses or whatever for our computers. So we changed it. A backup protocol for technical support coverage. It was just vague language, and it sort of implied we were talking about hardware when we're talking about human resources. So, you know, I think we're all very happy with this agreement. We worked hard on it and thank you. Attorney Anderson was very patient last year with us when we were hammering this out, and I think we had very few tweaks. Everyone's pretty happy, aside from, you know, the leaks notwithstanding, everyone's pretty happy with how things are going.
Any questions from the committee? And as you see, this is looked at every year, every year this exercise is done, so...
The town has been wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. So six, two, Rhode Island Comprehensive Assessment System, RICAS results.
Well, yes, the results were released a few weeks ago. And, you know, we were very disappointed. You know, we, we sort of did hold our ground with math, you know, we're, we beat every district around, but we don't look at that competitively. We're looking at our kids and what they need. And in ELA, we dropped six percentage points. We had a couple of grade level cohorts that took a severe dip. And so across our aggregate, that, that did drag us down. And we are a community of practice here, and we immediately mobilized when those scores came to light. Sonya and I had them for 72 hours. They were obviously embargoed before they were made public, and we did not sleep for 72 hours Friday night to, I think, Tuesday. I think educators are harder on themselves than anyone else can be. And I was lucky enough to watch Sonya gather up her team, the first instructional leadership team in this school's history. Her ELA coach coordinator, the IB coach coordinator, and various other specialists in the ELA area. And they used a protocol to problem solve, and basically they did a root cause analysis. They were absolutely candid, blunt, and, you know, pulled no punches with each other. They came up with a roughed-out 14, 15-point plan, and they will be presenting that in more detail at the December school committee meeting. Talking about scores and where they lead us. As educators, we look at these objective measures, these state assessments, as one data point in terms of our kids' lives. It's one, you know, snapshot in time. And for us, you know, it's sort of a reckoning for Wilbur McMahon, even though we are still holding steady, you know, in math, it's still not good enough. ELA, none of these, none of the data really reflects what our kids are capable of, or it doesn't reflect their, their skill sets. It reflects how we are not teaching to the target that has been given to us, and that is RICAS. It reflects likely a history of anti-high-stakes testing, you know, that sort of generated an opt-out movement, that generated a culture around, you can't even mention teaching to the test in the classroom, you can't mention, you know, that this is going to prepare you for the test. And so these scores are a reckoning for, for the Wilbur McMahon community. We are not a community that subscribes to valuing just metrics, but this objective measure is a sobering, you know, set of data for us. And that's why, you know, we feel we need more articulation with Portsmouth High School. I, and that's why we may want to sync up with them in terms of release time days in the future, so that our teachers can work with the ninth grade teachers, the 10th grade teachers. I was lucky to be part of a critical friends group at Ride. I met with the commissioner, she was actually partnered with me in a root cause analysis at the same time that our instructional leadership team was engaged in it here. And at the end of the root cause analysis, I said to the commissioner, I said, "My goodness, you know, I think my last answer to your why is we don't have a high school." Not having a high school in this community puts a lot of daylight between what we do here and the end game. The end game is high school readiness and then post-high school pathways, college, career, trades, military. And there may be, there may be this, you know, just this sort of out-of-sink piece that we can remedy with some PLC time, professional learning community time with our Portsmouth counterparts. We've mentioned in, at this table for the past year a few times, the Spanish two issue. When the articulation, the vertical articulation between our Spanish one teacher here and our Spanish two teachers at Portsmouth High School, when that was tightened, we filled those gaps. When our teacher here knew the end game with precision and the kids had enough time scheduled, we filled those gaps. We received a communication this week from a Spanish two teacher saying, "This was the most prepared cohort of Spanish two kids at Portsmouth High in her memory." So when we close that daylight between the rigor that's expected on the high school level, we don't have one here, so there's always been a disconnect, and the level of rigor, the comfort zone here, we will see that state metric and our kids sync up. We have many pieces to this plan, but that is one of them. There's just, there's not a sense of the end game, and so there, we need to elevate the rigor, and we need community support around that. We need community, community support around issues of, you know, grade inflation, or all kids having to be on the honor roll, or no one getting a C. We need authentic grading practices here in addition to elevated rigor. And that's my job, is to implement that. We've already started. Do you want to do your slides or...
Thank you for that honest assessment. Anyone else on that committee want to comment?
As it sounds as though there's more to come at the next meeting, I would just ask that we might be provided with a copy of the root, root cause analysis is the way you title it. Well, before the next meetings that we have, we're prepared to discuss it then.
Any other comments from the committee?
Absolutely.
Public. Can I always comment later if you choose? Thank you. Committee reports, Sports School Committee liaison report.
Yes, there was a fabulous presentation from a gentleman from the Coalition on vaping and the crisis that we're dealing with there. So I'm sure we're gonna address that at the Wellness Committee at some point. Everyone's very concerned about that, but he gave a really wonderful overview, Corey Sylvia Portsmouth Prevention Coalition, Melissa Miller.
I do know.
Yes. And we also talked extensively about their concerns with RICAS. So everybody is struggling.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Trust me. Province Public Schools. So no, we, things are going well.
Thank you. Recreation Committee, nothing to report. Health and Wellness, Jenna?
All good. We're meeting December 12th. Before-school box program, I think, is continuing to go really well. I observed it, which was, I was just blown away by it, just amazing. These moms whose younger kids are there too, and they're managing their younger kids and dealing with the students is just beautiful. It's like a ballet. Are the older kids coming at all?
I don't think there's as many of them coming. I think this, I think we need to get our younger kids coming and then have them follow up.
Which is what we had expected, yeah. Okay.
That's it.
Thanks. Policy Subcommittee, we'll take that down further. Ed?
Sure.
Okay, Oasis Subcommittee, Principal, anything? I will say, I was in it the other day, and there's more stuff in there, I mean, you can't even walk around. Trees, bushes, flowers, I don't know what's going, I can't even walk around in there. There's a lot of stuff in there.
It's growing.
Beautiful.
A lot of stuff.
There's a lot of stuff.
There's no paths in there, I can tell you that much. School Safety Subcommittee report, we had an executive session today, and it was centered around cameras, and all that is surrounded with cameras. Discussion items. Nine-one, update on Portland School District's multi-tiered system
Mariah.
Of supports. MTSS.
Yep, it's up online.
Did I?
Yes.
And Calvin's speaking up over there.
I thought you did that on purpose.
No problem, no problem, no problem. So I will revert back to Finance Report, go ahead.
All right, briefly.
I missed that whole thing.
You did.
Wow.
Briefly, you have the October 31st financial statements. I haven't got a projection yet because a lot of the invoices are still coming in, but just to focus in on the audit district tuition, which is really where a lot of the fluctuations are going to occur. We did finally get the billing in for the first quarter for Portsmouth. We did finally get the billing in for the first quarter for Portsmouth. We had 118 students, which is nine lower than our budget of 127, so there's about a $97,000 savings there. The Career and Tech, we have three and a half students at Newport, two students at the Met, five and a half students. Based on the tuition, we're probably going to be right on budget for that one, so we should be in pretty good shape there. And we are watching, some of the expenses we are watching, obviously, are the maintenance and the upkeep for this building. Sometimes there are expenses that pop up here that we didn't, we didn't have budgeted, so we're continuing to watch those, but other than that, I don't see any unusual items in the budget for FY '20.
Questions for John, anyone?
John, this one, Intibida. We do have a CTE, Intibida.
We have a...
I've done the transportation for her.
All right, they'll get, they'll bill us based on...
Maybe.
Addendum A, so I'll get that.
Yep.
Thank you. 7-2, capital improvement five-year plans. I'd say something about that, John?
Yeah, we're working with IGB. They're going to put together a five-year plan. We should be meeting with them over the next few months. I believe we're going to submit that in, we'll set, the Stage One would go in in September with approval for RIDE in November. In the meantime, what we're going to be looking at is the needs for this building over the next five years, whether we're going to look at things like, you know, the building envelope for windows. We've had some discussion about whether we put solar in, in the, on the roof. There may be other items that are going to come up as we go forward, but we'll have, obviously, plenty of time for discussion before that five-year plan gets submitted.
So, I'd like to segue off that. Is an update on the front office gym renovation? Can you give me an update on that?
At this point in time, the contract, the contract has been signed with the contract. They're in the process now of ordering materials. I don't believe...
Submittal process every day we're getting submittals, you and I, copied on.
But in terms of a scheduled date, the demo's not going to take all that much time. I think they're looking at, what, two or three weeks in total? So, we probably see that happening either sometime later this month or early December. One of the things that we're going to wait on, obviously, is the ballistic glass, because that was a 14-week lead time. So, that will be the last piece that we're probably going to go in.
Submittals are in for just about everything, including the bollards. We got those today.
Okay. Are we getting closer to a plan of what it's going to look like to our parents when we start ripping apart the front office?
Yeah, we had some discussions with the fire chief, because he doesn't want the alarms going off with dust and everything else, so we're going to coordinate that, so that we don't have any false alarms going on, and so, we're preparing for that, for that construction.
So, I'd like to see that at some point. I know I've asked for it a few times.
Mike Montel doesn't have that ready for us yet, but...
It's okay, it's okay. I just don't want him to be forgotten, that's all. Thank you.
All right, and just one quick...
Go ahead.
The gym natorium renovation, will that take care of the leak that's driving you crazy?
I think we need to fix that even beforehand. Yeah, it's pretty bad.
If that leak is a roof leak, there's fairly significant warranty on that roof from 2014, so.
It's been leaking for years.
It's determined to be a roof will be able to go to warranty on it.
It's been, you know, leaking for about five years. I don't think it's the roof itself. I think it's...
Flashing.
Someone said it might be the brickwork or something like that. We are in process of getting it looked at. It has to be done.
All right. 9-1, discussion items. Update on the Portsmouth School District's multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS.
Yeah.
People don't know about what's going on over there? Want to just briefly explain that?
Sure. The School Committee likes an update every now and then in the wake of the Nathan...
Bruno.
Excuse me, please forgive me. Nathan Bruno, to the game Be Great For Nate, which turned into EIS, no, ESI, Every Student Initiate. Initiate. In the wake of the Nathan Bruno tragedy at Portsmouth High School, where our children matriculate, the School Committee has asked me to be in continual contact with the superintendent around the multi-tiered system of supports in place there. The MTSS system, we have one here, was always in place in Portsmouth, but it was never quite systematized. And what they've done now is they have hired a coordinator, a district-wide coordinator, to ensure that all new practices and protocols, and there are no new policies, there are only new practices and protocols, that they're consistent throughout the district, and that documentation is consistent. Team makeup at each building, the MTSS team is consistent, and I'm happy to report that the data is on an individual basis, and it is reaching kids and supporting kids like never before, whether it's an academic goal or a social-emotional goal, that the MTSS team is working with to, you know, assist that child. Could be situational, it could be an ongoing vulnerability, but there's now a consistent support system in place. There always was a support system, but not as systematized.
Well, from the outside looking in, and it looks like it's a better atmosphere over there, from my own personal view, but I don't know, you know, what's going on. From what I see, being disseminated from them, and it looks like it's positive.
Consistent procedures and protocols.
Any other questions on that?
Have been a game changer.
Okay, thanks. 19, scheduling options being discussed at Portsmouth High School. Want to quickly explain that one?
If there are any parents of Portsmouth High School kids watching this, and I hope this picks it up, Roger, who calls me the Whisperer.
It is.
It's my Zen, you know, yogini demeanor. I have worked and taught under both schedules. Right now, Portsmouth has a block schedule. It's an AB four-four, and they're thinking of going towards, they call it a waterfall schedule, you may call it a rotating schedule, and it's confusing. So, if there are any parents who want to contact me or meet with me, or, you know, I'm willing to demystify this for them, especially our eighth-grade parents. I don't think Portsmouth has decided yet what kind of schedule they'll have for next year. They did hold their parents and kids. Anecdotally, I've heard that for some kids, the four-by-four block, which means four courses a day at an hour and a half, 90 minutes a day, teachers love it, because they can do a focused lesson for 30 minutes, then they can, you know, have the kids break off 45 minutes into stations or groups, and then they can spend 15 minutes reflecting and getting ready, you know, kickstarting their homework. But 90 minutes for a 14-year-old, an 18-year-old, you know, some of the, some of the kids have said, "Oh, it can be, it can be deadly." So, that's one of the cons of a four-by-four schedule. 90-minute classes, you take four one day, you take four the next day. It's an AB year-round. Some schools do an A semester one, all the same four courses, and then a B second semester, all four courses. But it's that 90-minute block. You can do a lot of, you know, aside from direct instruction, you can do a lot of project-based learning with a 90-minute block. What happened at Portsmouth High School last year, I believe some juniors, they were rising seniors, really, they stormed a School Committee meeting, and they took the mic and said that we can't, you know, this block has been a constraint to accessing certain courses. And so, the school listened. The adults listened to the kids, and, which is what schools should do. Student voice and choice equals engagement, and all those good things happen when students are engaged. And so, I think the students would rather have seven, you know, eight courses, and seven a day, and drop one, hence that waterfall. And so, what you do, you know, the kids would have, day one would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, day two would be two, three, four, five, six, eight, and you just sort of drop, and you waterfall. The beauty of that, and I'll tell parents, is you get the kids at a different time every day. With a block, if you have those kids, 7:30 in the morning to nine, and they're not morning kids, or if you have the 12:30 to two class, when the kids are, you know, zonked out, so the waterfall is something they're considering. Rather than a fixed schedule, the class meets the same time every day, the waterfall is, you know, it sort of flows every day in a different sequence of classes. So, some of our eighth-grade parents, I know they have questions, so I'm going to talk with them.
Thank you for explaining that on camera. Any questions for anyone on that? Ken?
So, how, if any, are we having a voice in this discussion and in the decision of the high school's making?
Yeah, I think it's, it's current parents and all kids.
So, I mean, do we as a school have?
No, we don't have any agency in terms of how they set their academic schedule.
It's a good question. I asked the same question to the superintendent, and she gave me that answer. I didn't ask John, though. Is there illegal, is there anything, there's nothing we can do, right?
No.
I mean, I think the best, the best we can do is, is explain it and...
Just educate ourselves.
Educate, what? Anything, John?
Right. You have a contract with Portsmouth. You take what Portsmouth delivers. Your contract is coming up. If you wish to explore other options, and there are other options out there, the time to look at other options will be coming very shortly.
But, you know, I'm in contact with Joey Morrell and the freshman coordinator, freshman academy coordinator, and the guidance counselor. Kids do like a rotating schedule. They don't like to, you know, have a fixed schedule, the same classes every day. So, I'm giving my feedback.
Paul, do you have a question?
I'll give mine.
Go ahead.
So, I know my child and his friends love the schedule the way it is now. They like the block schedule, because it allows them to do after-school activities and be able to schedule for themselves. So, if they know they have, you know, a band event tonight, they need to get their homework done for tomorrow, yesterday, you know, they're able to make those plans themselves. So, I know the kids at Portsmouth are being very vocal, whichever way.
Yep.
They feel as best they have taken the survey, and I know they've been encouraging their parents to take the survey and vote in favor of what they like.
It's energizing the school, that's for sure, you know? And giving the kids that voice and choice gives them ownership, so. I mean, they've had the fixed schedule for a while, so it might be time for change. It does throw a school into a tailspin when you change the academic schedule. It really does take a couple of years for teachers to learn to teach to a 55-minute as opposed to a 90, and so, I mean, there are pluses and minuses.
Thank you. 9-3, principal and superintendent goals for 2020. So, how this is going to work, committee, is Mariah is going to supply us with this principal goals. She'll be first, that'll be in December. We'll review her current goals in the executive session with you. Then, we will go into open session, and we'll have a set of new goals for you. So, that's how we're going to do that. Then, in January, we'll do the same thing with the superintendent. Same process. Any discussion from the committee on that? Thank you. Any discussion from the principal or superintendent? Good. Public input? This is your time to shine, if you'd like. Not seeing any. Action items. 11-1, consider discussing vote on affirmative action and non-discrimination policy. This is a second read. Edward?
Happy to entertain any questions, just...
Do we have it on them?
Brought the language into compliance with respect to the Title IX coordinator that we didn't have identified, and now we do.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Go second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Ed, for that.
That's great.
11-2, consider discussing vote, crisis response policy amendments. Again, a second read.
Again, much like the last, where it just brings us into, we're required to have a crisis response team, and essentially, it would just changed the name of what we already had in place.
Consider a vote to accept that? Do I have one? Motion?
Give a vote.
Motion, excuse me. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. 11-3, consider discussing vote on field trip policy amendments. This is a second read. What do we got on this?
The field trip policy was the Helping Hands Fund paragraph, which articulated that we do have financial help available for those who would otherwise have difficulty going on a field trip.
Where is that wordage?
Second paragraph.
Oh.
Yep, there, it's...
There is a fund?
Yep, Helping Hands.
The Helping Hands Fund, administer by the school's social worker, and principal provide financial assistance so that all students may participate. All applicants are reviewed, and a confidential, incompetence in application forms may be found on the school's website or at their business office. Is that whole paragraph new?
Uh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a motion?
I say move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Ed, this is a first read. Discuss on purchasing policy amendments.
The purchasing policy amendment, I would like to, if possible, put off...
Table?
To table, because we need to review and hope to be able to get Mr. Mackney at the next policy meeting to be able to discuss that.
What about, did you know that?
I don't know.
I did. I don't know why I'm doing that. I'll go back to that.
Because we have the new agenda format. I'm getting lost in my head.
No, that's not, that's not, no, that's just my fault.
The waterfall.
That's my fault. So, we're going to table that, and then table that, and we're going to hop back to 11-4, which is a first read, facilities use policy amendment.
The facilities use policy amendment is going to add, because we have charge over the gymnasium and fields during school hours, and because the Recreation Committee has charge over the gymnasium and fields during non-school hours, we need to be able to interface and coordinate, and this allows for additional signature lines, so that when it's an after-school hours event, the Recreation Committee has signed off on it, and everyone is on the same calendar.
Makes sense. That's a first read, so we'll see that again next month.
Mm-hmm.
11-6, consider discussing vote, this is again a first read, home instruction policy amendments.
I would ask that we also table that, and if possible, I would, we discussed it at the policy Subcommittee level, but would appreciate it if we could have it as a topic for discussion for the next regular meeting, to decide how it is that we ought to approach, to use the language of others. I have lost it here, and I had it up on the top, so that I didn't. Is it a, oh, here it is. A partially, partial enrollment, I believe, is the term, where home-educated students would be participating in classes at this school, or Portsmouth High School, et cetera.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right, we'll see that again. 11-7, consider discussing, again, a first read, data collection policy.
This was just my attempt to codify what is effectively present practice, and to be sure that everybody is using that practice. If there are any questions, I can read it verbatim. It seems fairly straightforward and self-evident. There was that one addition that was made, adding state assessments, but I don't have any questions, or...
No, I don't, I understand it. Okay. All right, any questions from the committee on that one? All right, we'll see that again next month. 11-8, consider discussing vote on creating a little... 11-8, consider discussing vote on creating a little company, school committee resolution to amend the field trip funding law. Do I have a motion?
Yes, you have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, who would like to discuss this? Ed?
Happy to. I'm going to scroll back if I can and find under correspondence what is that, my scrolling isn't working here. So the resolution from Exeter West Greenwich. I know that we've had multiple discussions as a school committee about the new field trip policy and its implications, and this, the solution ultimately lies with the General Assembly, and this would just, I mean, I would advocate that we adopt this resolution and/or sign on to the resolution that they have, but that would add language so that the ride prohibition provision, do we have? We do. And if it is, if you scroll down to the second page, right there, in that second paragraph, it would add that language that is in bold font.
This prohibition?
Yes.
Does not apply to school-sponsored field trips, which prevents. Parents can be asked for funding as long as this provides funding to any student whose family cannot afford the cost of curriculum-based trips required by a normal basic education plan. So then that means what?
We presently offer financial assistance, and this would just provide that exception from what precedes that.
Anything to add to that, John?
No. That's fine. It's a policy question, and that's what school committees are for.
It's what we do. It's what Ed does, really.
I don't, would that be something, would you draft the resolution, John, or would we just adopt this one and...
I think it's more effective if you, if you, to frankly, cut and paste theirs and send it as yours, because then legislators will know when they open the envelope what you're talking about.
Thank you, yes, sorry, I meant adopt there, that language.
And that's fine, and that's, if you folks are comfortable with it, that's fine.
Any, we're in discussion, any discussion from any of the folks here?
No, we're doing it.
No one for discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any. 11-9, consider discussing vote to approve 2020 schedule meeting, is there a motion? So moved. I've got Polly and a... Any discussion on that? Do we need to see that? Is it up there?
Resolution.
Second ones, there it is. All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, oh.
So November 11th is a question.
Okay. Veteran's Day, why would we have it on Veteran's Day?
Well, right, so there's not a November date.
So November 11th is a national holiday, Wednesday November 4th or Wednesday November 18th, they're both possibilities.
They're both what?
Possibilities.
All possibilities.
Yeah, so you want to pick one?
Which one makes sense with, when's October?
I'd say four.
Okay.
I'll say four, so we're going to amend this thing?
Yeah.
We got to amend this thing?
Sure. I'd like to amend the agenda to reflect that in November...
You're going to take your, you're going to take your motion? Oh. You have to take, I got a motion and a second, now we want to amend it. Can you just amend it?
I'm trying.
Go ahead.
You've made, there's been a motion to approve...
Yes.
The schedule.
Yes.
The motion was seconded.
Yep.
Does anyone object to amending the motion to fix the date in November?
Anyone object to the motion?
No.
No.
Then what's the fix?
What's the fix? Go ahead.
To make the November meeting the 4th of November instead of the 11th.
Any motion for that?
It's, the motion that is on the floor is to adopt the calendar with November 4th instead of November 11.
Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 11-10, consider discussing vote to approve any requests for inclusion administration and or legal. Not seeing any. I will consider a vote to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?